...not on the agenda. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? If so, you may fill out a request to speak form with the secretary and after introduction have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the chairman. Nobody's out there, okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously except for the absence of Commissioner Nall and Commissioner Barino. That's the end of the consent calendar. Are there any Commissioner communication disclosures regarding agendized projects? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a communication disclosure for a project involving the heritage. I spoke with Mr. Ogulnick on October 5th and we met in person to discuss the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Alderetti.
Thank you. I received emails but no substantive communications from Mr. Ogulnick and Ms. Sopetto on October 6th and 7th.
Commissioner Mill?
On October 1st, I met with Jeremy and Ryan Ogulnick along with Pam Sopetto at Ms. Sopetto's office on MacArthur. We were discussing the Heritage Village project. They gave me an overview of the project and answered some of my questions regarding concerns of traffic and the issues that were raised by the city of Tustin and Irvine. On October the 7th, I received a text message from Robert Bisno inquiring about the staff report regarding the project at 2001 East Dyer, AKA Heritage Village. And in that text, he had expressed some concerns to me regarding the economic impact of the project. On October the 8th, I in turn texted Mr. Bisno to let him know that the staff report was ready and then subsequently I emailed him said report.
Thank you. Commissioner Bauer?
I similarly had or I have a disclosure regarding the heritage project. I met with Ms. Sopetto and Ryan Ogulnick on last Thursday regarding the project.
And I also had a similar meeting on the heritage project with Mr. Ogulnick. I believe it was last weekend, the 7th. Just to, he dropped off the brochure and we had a brief meeting on the subject.
Anybody else said it? Okay. Let's move on to item number one. Ricardo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the planning commission. Up for discussion before you is variance number 2015-7 to allow multiple wall-mounted signs on two elevations and to allow two signs above the maximum allowed height of 20 feet at the building located at 2401 South Pullman Street. Delamo Motorsports is a motorcycle, all-terrain vehicle and power watercraft retailer. They're looking to locate at this site and they're also proposing to construct significant tenant improvements that are going to consist of a motorcycle display bridge and tower. They're requesting approval of a variance to allow six wall signs on the north elevation and six wall signs on the northwest elevation. Two of those signs are proposed to be located above 20 feet in height. A variance for the request would be required. Here is the site. It's in the light industrial zoning district. It's surrounded by industrial uses to the north, to the east and to the south and by State Route 55 to the west. The site there is situated at a reverse curve in Pullman Street, which has resulted in an odd-shaped lot and the building located at a larger setback than surrounding buildings in the area. Here's a site photo of the existing building of the northwest elevation with State Route 55 just to the west at a significant grade difference than the existing building there. Here's a site plan showing the existing building and also the location of the proposed display tower and bridge in yellow. And in red and green there, you can see the location on the north and northwest elevations where the proposed signs will be located. Here's the north elevation showing the five signs that are going to be advertising the manufacturers or motorcycle makes that Delamo Motorsports will offer as well as the one business identification sign that is proposed to be located at the top of the display tower. Here's the northwest elevation showing a similar type of configuration with the five motorcycle makes advertised there and the one business identification sign located at the top of the display tower on the left. Analysis of the project revealed that this project would require approval of a variance for the installation of more than one wall sign on each elevation and also to allow for the installation of signs above 20 feet in height. Analysis also revealed that due to site characteristics and architecture of the proposed building, strict application of the existing sign code, the San Antonio Municipal Code, would limit Delamo Motorsports' advertising and branding ability and could also result in potential sign clutter. Also, the project would be consistent with several goals of the general plan and it would not be detrimental to the public and surrounding properties. Based on analysis provided in the staff report, staff recommends approval of variance number 2015-7 as conditioned. That concludes my presentation.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? Commissioner Bauer? So is that, I understand the sign ordinance right now currently limits a owner, their advertisement, their signage to that particular owner, right?
It limits to the business name as well as five words advertising products sold at the site. So if, for instance, Delamo Motorsports were to reconfigure the design to incorporate the different motorcycle manufacturers and kind of clump them all together into one large sign, that would technically meet the code, but it could result in sign clutter. So this design is kind of spreading those out, which results in multiple wall-mounted signs, but still limiting them to the five words or in this case, brands advertising that they'd be carrying at the site.
So they would be otherwise entitled, just put Kawasaki, Yamaha, whatever, the other five, the five motorcycle brands that they're selling on one sign?
If they were to clump them all together and they would be located below 20 feet, they could potentially do that if they met their other assigned criteria or codes.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Ricardo, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any written communications on this item?
There was an email received by Milton Elion, business owner at 1520 Rucolo, supporting this project.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and if you wish to address the planning commission, please file a request to speak form with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairman. The action of the planning commission is final following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the San Antonio Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the planning department within 10 days from the date of the commission's action or unless set for public hearing by the city council. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion and/or a discussion or both.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mill?
I move we adopt a resolution approving variance 2015-07 as conditioned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Nall and Commissioner Barino absent. Like to move on to the next item and the same rules apply for the public speaking when we get to that.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. The item before you here is the Heritage Mixed Use Project. As you can see there on the cover there, we have five different entitlements that I'll go through momentarily with you. The project site is located at 2001 East Dyer Road. So what the applicant is requesting this afternoon, this evening, it's Dyer at 18 LLC. They're requesting it to allow a mixed-use development to be built at this project location, again, 2001 East Dyer Road, 1,221 apartment units, 18,000 square feet of commercial, retail and restaurants, as well as a 56,000 square foot office building that will remain as part of the existing building. So in addition to, in order to allow this project, they need approval of several entitlements, certification of environmental impact report, a general plan amendment, a zone change, a development agreement and a vesting track map. Here's an aerial map of the site here. As you can see there, it's about 18.84 acre project site, currently zoned industrial, general plan, a professional administrative office. Area has a long history of industrial and office zoning since probably back in the 60s it's been that, that type of zoning. As you can see surrounding the properties to the north, you have some office buildings and industrial and to the south there below Dyer Road, it's pretty much industrial, a little scatter of office in there as well. Then to the east on the opposite side of Red Hill is Tustin, City of Tustin and their legacy project. And then south of Dyer Road and east of Red Hill, there's the bottom of it, there's the City of Irvine and pretty much industrial for the City of Irvine. Again, as you can see on the site there, it's 18.84 acres and what it has right now is 360,000 square foot industrial building, has been baking for over about a dozen years. This is a proposed site plan. I apologize, didn't come out as well as it did on the computer, but you have a copy of it in your packet there before, it's in your, in front of you as well, it's a reduced plans that you have. And it's a four-phase project. Phase one is right there on Dyer Road, it's called also Phase A or Site One. Then you go clockwise to the left is the second phase. Right above there's third phase and then the fourth phase is an office building there in the center and that are more than likely to be built on the first phase because they have to demolish most of that building. So they'll need to keep a tenant that's existing there right now to do that, to build that office building, so very likely it's going to be part of that first phase. Phase one, 335 units, 403 units in Phase Two and then 483 units for Phase Three. And that's what they call a wrapped project, which is going to be wrapped around a five-and-a-half or six-story parking structures. Floor plans here, there's 17 different floor plans, these are just part of the floor plans here before you, again, you have the floor plans in your packet. You're looking at anything from studio to live work up to three-bedroom units, ranges in size from 600 square feet for the studio up to 1,400, a little more than 1,400 for the three-bedroom unit. They'll be scattered throughout all three phases of the project. Here's a project rendering. The project is a pretty nicely designed project, some quality materials and it's designed pretty very well. As you can see here, this is a rendering of one of them. Again, it's in your packet that you're provided. And here's a second rendering of TelePacific. This is the office component there, the data center that's going to remain on the site. And this is a conversion of part of industrial to the office. And here's a landscape plan here. There'll be a variety of pathways and trails in the project. As you can see in that center left, it's a Central Park, a little over an acre Central Park, be a common area gathering space, recreational space. Each building's also going to have a variety of open space amenities as well. You're going to have some rooftop decks on each of the buildings as well as a variety of rooms and lounges within each of the buildings. That could be a TV room, could be a cooking room, but that'll be a mix team within each of those phases as well. So that's an overview of the project itself and let's kind of go through the different components that are before you this evening. The first one is the final environmental impact report. If you recall, back in August, you had a public hearing on taking comments on EIR. It was released for review in July, had this meeting here at the end of August and the project, the comment period closed at the end of August. Part of the EIR analyzed three different phases, their project alternatives for the project. During that 45-day period, we received response to comments, received eight different comments, which we've commented on and that is part of the final EIR, which is that small booklet that you have before you. You also have the draft EIR, which is the thicker document that you saw back in August. And what that document found is that all the impacts are pretty much mitigated to less insignificance with the exception of two, air quality and transportation. As far as air quality, just found that the basin that we're in, there's some long-range impacts, long-term impacts that just can't be mitigated to less insignificance. So what will have to happen is a statement of all right considerations, wanting to be adopted for that portion, as well as for transportation and traffic. What the study found was there's nine intersections that were, couldn't be, couldn't be mitigated to less insignificance and four of those are Caltrans ramps. So what comes out of that is they have to provide a fair share contribution for the improvements on that project. None of those improvements are onsite, they're all offsite, so they'll have to provide some financial mitigation for those. So that's the EIR. The second piece is a development agreement. What they're looking for here, it's in your packet, the DA is one of your exhibits, but they're looking for a five-year agreement with a five-year extension. And that makes some sense given it's a multi-phase project to give them some time to build it all out. They're going to be allowed to phase the project. They'll be doing a public art contribution. It's going to be based on one-half, 1% of the construction cost of the project. It's somewhere around $1.5 million. It's anywhere from 220 to 270 million dollars devaluation, so they'll have to go to about half a percent of that, so right around $1.5 million. And that'll be divided up into the different phases. We're going to require the open space, that Central Park is already built in that first phase of development so that incentive amenities in there as well as the roadway system. And they'll have to comply with the housing opportunity ordinance. This is a pipeline project, so they'll be paying $9.35 per howdewell square foot for the project. The vesting map, they're looking to subdivide the property into six parcels. Four of them are development parcels, two of them are the common roads and the public open space. It's not a subdivision for condo purposes, it's just for those individual phases. And what they'll have to do is as part of this, middle is turn in some CCNRs at later date in order to provide common area maintenance, drainage and the easement access egress. So those common typical CCNRs for the project. Zone change, general plan amendment, I kind of looped those together into one because they're both kind of a similar topic. Again, the property is zoned industrial, has a general plan designation of office, so what they're asking for is a change for those. As far as the zoning, they're asking change the zoning from the M1 to a specific development designation, SD. And that's again a document that you've seen before, but allows us to craft some new development standards for this specific parcel only and doesn't apply to any other parcel but this one here in the city. And hand-in-hand, in order to have this approved, you need to get both of those, the next one approved as well, which is the general plan amendment. And what they're looking to do is change the land use designation to district center and that's our most intense designation, also allows a mixture of uses out there as is what they have proposed here. Again, they have residential, commercial and office, so we'd need that district center. Also, they're doing a density of about 65 units per acre, which is also part of our district center designation as well. It's the highest designation that we have. In your report, I highlighted a few issues or a few concerns that we saw with this project when it first came in and I'll kind of go over them here for you. One is this quadrant here, it's the southeast quadrant of the city, it's pretty much all industrial, you've been out there, seen the map and taken a look, it's all 100% industrial or office. And so what we have here is we have a pretty strong uniform base, a clean industrial base that generates jobs, generates revenue for the city and there's some concerns about losing that. You can easily go from industrial to residential, but you can't go from residential over to industrial. So once you change the zoning, you've lost it pretty much forever. Land use compatibility, there's some concerns, they're putting a residential project in the middle of industrial zone, you've got railroad spurs nearby, you've got the heavy trucks that are going by, the industrial traffic. So you've got some concern with the compatibility of residential with that, with those different type of industrial uses out there. And as you've seen in a letter that was provided to you this morning, the airport land use commission also has concerns with compatibility with residential uses in the flight path. And then again, as I mentioned earlier here, the area, it pretty much is one of our cleaner, stronger planned bases. We don't have junkyards out there, we don't have tow yards, don't have any outdoor storage. It's pretty much a clean, productive, very vibrant, very little to none occupancy out there, with the exception of this building, of course, but it's pretty much strong industrial base and so there's some concerns with losing that industrial base. Now on the flip side of that, what we're doing right now is a general plan update. And one of the areas that we've targeted for a potential rezone and redesignation is this area over here, so it may have some potential for a mixed use. But right now, it's currently an idea, a vision that we have right now, want to do some more research and outreach and a little more work on that, but hopefully within the next year or so, we'll come back to this body with some clean direction on that. But again, it is one of these areas we are targeting as a potential reuse to a mixed-use And with that, we left you here with something that you really haven't seen too much in the past and what we're asking for is some planning commission direction on this project. Because of all the different complex issues involved, we're looking at the planning commission provide some direction on this project here. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have. The team here, the development team is here, they've got a presentation they want to run by you in a few minutes as well. And that's it for my presentation. Thank you.
So we have some questions for staff. Commissioner Mill?
Vince, if the applicant were to sell the property, would it need to come back to us again?
It would. One of the provisions in the development agreement is that transfer has to come back to the planning commission and council. And one of the reasons is in there, it's been in all our development agreements, we want to be sure that the developer that takes over is just as good or better. We don't want a lesser developer taking over the project. So we have that provision in the DA that says you transfer it, come back for approval.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer? Has the city done an independent study of the impact? And it always concerns me when we lose industrial base or commercial base, that's where our taxes are coming from. And they've done a study here in terms of the economic benefit as they see it. Has the city done or conducted an independent investigation in term of what the loss might be if, let's say this was let it out on an industrial, as an industrial site?
For that particular, to answer your question, no, not for that particular piece of losing that. We had, what we did was a peer review. As you mentioned, they did a study, an economic study was done and as part of the EIR, we had them also do an economics peer review of the study that they proposed. And it pretty much says that there will be a financial benefit, not as much as what they proposed or they identified in their study. For instance, there were, this, their study mentioned about $1.5 million surplus to the general fund. This study says almost a million dollars, so about a third less. It does say that there is going to be about half a million dollars in sales tax generated, of which only 10% will be captured by the city because we have no, we have no shopping. We have no of those types of commercial resources nearby. If you notice on the aerial map, there's no place to shop in here within nearby distance. So where they're going to go, they're going to go to the district, they're going to go to Tustin, to Costco, to Mother's Market, there's a market down the street there. So we're going to capture maybe 10% of that discretionary income. But as far as the actual study of industrial, no, that was not the intent of the study, it was basically just a peer review of the study they provided.
Hassan?
If I may add something to what Mr. Fergoson had mentioned, one of the reasons that we're looking at this entire area for redesignation as part of the general plan update is that we feel that the surrounding cities around us are creating a high-density mixed-use and commercial sets of activities around us with very little, while we will get a lot of the impacts of all the traffic, very little of the benefits. Therefore, we're looking at designing this area as a mixed use so that we have the opportunity to look at new development, redevelopment of the area to create our own tax basis as well. So in one way, at this point, the residential density, the part of the residential could benefit the surrounding cities, but by the time we're done with the general plan redesignation, we think that we will, we're pretty sure, in fact, that we're going to recommend changing the general plan designation and the zoning designation of this area to create a new economic base as well.
Any questions?
Do we have a timeframe?
Yes, the timeframe for the general plan update is the draft will be completed within two years. However, we're doing the concurrent rezoning of some parts of the city along with the general plan update so that we don't miss out on this current economic boom that's taking over the region.
Commissioner Buer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The economic impact study that was done by the applicant, that was not required by the city, correct?
That's correct.
So he did that voluntarily?
Correct.
And then the peer review was done by the city to?
That's correct.
All right, and then as far as the flight path, so we've got this letter from the airport authority. So would the applicant or the developer, whoever that is at that time, they would be required through something to notify the residents, hey, you're under a flight path? So it's not like somebody's going to move in and all of a sudden they're resting in the live room and then there's a jet that goes over by. They're going to know this, right?
Right, and that's in the development agreement, they have to notify them of the flight path and also the potential noise impact. Let me just add a little layer onto that. On Thursday, we're going to airport landage commission for their, we have to find it, because we're doing a zoning change, we got to go to the airport commission for a determination of consistency. They've already stated their position in that letter today, they don't think it's consistent. So what would have to happen is the city council have to adopt, basically have to override what the airport landage commission does.
Kind of like what we do with alcohol.
Except much more severe because we assume all the liability if something happens now if a plane crashes in the area.
I'm seeing just basically one entity saying one thing, we're kind of overriding it, some sort of statement. And then my other question is, we talk about the zoning in our city and it's important to really understand what we're doing, but as Hassan had mentioned, we see that Tustin is doing stuff on their side of Red Hill and we would be naive to avoid understanding that. Is there anything that staff might have prepared that shows us kind of a overlay of sort of what Tustin's got planned versus what we've got planned? And the reason I, I imagine we may not have that, but it's just because when I first saw it, I looked at it and I said, wow, this is a unique zone in the area. But as Hassan mentioned, when you take into consideration the overall area, regardless of which city has their lines there, it's not out of character for that area. Once they get developing on their side of Red Hill, what we're doing, if this were to be adopted tonight, would not be out of character at that point.
I don't have anything prepared for you, however, in your final EIR, the small document here, if you go to page two, go to page 2-13, which is the City of Tustin's letter, they included in their letter a map of the Tustin Legacy Project.
Okay, so what we see here then on the, this is immediately across the street from us, correct?
Yes, so what you'll see at line immediately across the street is a combination of commercial, industrial and some parks plus a shelter and a shared facility. The residential starts on number 10, 13 and 15, so it goes in a little bit on their property. It's not immediately lining Red Hill, but it's inset, maybe a third way through the project, it's the purple, number 15 is probably the closest.
And just to be clear, the bottom of this map here on this page, that's Baranca, which on our side of the world would be Dyer.
Dyer, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions and they really go to the paragraph five in the staff report under development agreement, which states that we're requiring an in-lug fee of 9.35 and per square foot. And my question to that is, why isn't this 15, which is what I thought the council approved a month ago?
Right.
Why isn't it 9.35?
Sure. They, yeah, they approved on August 4th, the revised housing opportunity ordinance says any project that's been submitted as of August 4th is considered a pipeline project. And pipeline projects have the option to either comply with the old ordinance, which is the fact that you approved three or four years ago, or pay the fee of $9.35 per square foot.
Okay, so?
So they're, since they're a pipeline project, they get the lower fee. Anything submitted in on August 5th pays $15 a square foot.
Okay, so how many projects are in pipeline that are 9.35?
At least a dozen.
A dozen, okay. And then what is the in-lug fee per square foot in other cities like Irvine, Glendale, Pasadena, Anaheim, if we know?
I'll have Hassan answer that one, he did a lot of research on that portion of it.
I know Glendale does not have an in-lug fee right now because they do not have any completion rate for it now since there's been a redevelopment. Pasadena is upwards of, I think, 35 plus. I don't know about Irvine and other cities, however, $15 is what the city council adopted.
Okay, so I have a little bit of concern that we're at 9.35. The other, the other thing I've noticed since I've been on this commission is that projects, we set a lot of money aside in the in-lug fee context, but we don't necessarily ever know where that money goes, meaning I couldn't tell you if it was used on an affordable project for, to apply a code of pain.
With all due respect to the commissioner and Mr. Chair, I would like to say, to ask the planning commission to stay within the purview of the planning commission, which is not the expenditure of in-lug housing funds and the affordable housing is not the expenditure of in-lue housing funds and the affordable housing, the inclusionary housing ordinance, which was established by the city council, part of the ordinance. I know this is an unusual thing for the planning directors to step in and advise the commission, but I may just start doing that. This is a question that is beyond the purview of the planning commission, and I advise you not to continue that.
Okay.
The city attorney can add if I may correct.
So before I say that, the reason why I bring it up is because we have an incomplete or un-executed development agreement before us. So you're asking us to approve the development agreement, the in-lue fees are set in the development agreement, and so that's why I've asked the question. I'm not trying to do anything beyond that. So if that's outside the purview, then I'm open to being educated why?
Well, the calculation of the in-lue fee is outside the purview.
Okay.
The development agreement is not executed yet, but as this is considered a pipeline project, they'll take the $9.35.
Okay, so is it customary that we execute or approve a project when we don't have a development agreement executed? I only ask because I can't, this isn't executed as a, this could be negotiated. I negotiate contracts all day, it could be negotiated for months now. So I'm just wondering why we haven't?
The terms that are in the development agreement have been agreed to by the developer. There was not a sufficient time to get it executed, but it will be executed before close to the council.
Got it, okay. As to my other question, which was about identifying applicants, that this isn't as to the dollar amount of $9.35, what it is to, do we, what I've seen since the time I've been on this commission is that folks don't know where fees go. Is there ability to do that, to earmark them, to, do we ever do that?
If I may, the ordinance, as it's written, allows the applicant to recommend a preference. However, there's no obligation on your part or the city's part to accept that recommendation. The ultimate responsibility and the decision of how to spend the in-lue fee remains with the community development agency and the housing authority, and the recommendation is only that, the recommendation.
Got it, okay. And then the last question I had was, this is more a sort of a policy argument, when in my time on this commission, we tried to move away from specific development plans, SDEs, if that's my recollection. So in this instance, why, I guess the larger question is, why haven't we gone forward with the general plan update so that we're not in the position that we are tonight, when we're sort of arguing, or maybe, you know, offering evidence about what the benefit will be, what this area is going to become? Is it just sort of unfortunate timing?
It's a timing issue. This project came in about a year ago, we've been processing it for a little over a year, not two years, it's been about a year, a little, about a year and a half almost, we're processing it. In order to do that, we'd have to delay this project probably another two years, as Hassan mentioned.
Yes, and I really appreciate that question, if I may, Mr. Chair, because this is going to be a question that's probably going to be repeated between now and the next two years, two years. The reason is that our general plan is severely outdated, and you're correct, this kind of zoning is, and the number of variances that we get are symptomatic of having an internally inconsistent zoning code and perhaps outdated general plan designation. So as a result, we're doing these site types of rezoning, and from now on, we will be giving the information as to where the general plan and zoning code updates are along with these patch of applications precisely for the reasons that you explained.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it for me.
Commissioner Bussar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could staff clarify, just because usually in our recommended actions on the staff report, we have adopt the resolution, or there's some sort of course. Since we don't have that today, just for myself and for my colleagues, because I think Commissioner Alderay brought up something, with the development agreement, are we, the planning commission, approving it or recommending that the council approve it?
You're recommending all these items.
Recommending all of them?
Right.
Now, including the vesting tracking?
Yes, yes, they'll all go together to the city council for a final action by the city council.
Okay, so if we were to move forward with wanting to approve this, we would be recommending approval?
Yes.
And then some of the items that Hassan had brought up would be things that would be under the council's purview?
Correct. And we will in turn change all the documents that you have, all the resolutions, the ordinances to reflect your action tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mill?
I don't want to step out of my purview here, but let me just ask this. If we wanted to make a suggestion, I'm not saying that this is the case, but if we did have a suggestion as to where we wanted funds earmarked, can we make that as part of our recommendation?
The planning commission has the ability to make a specific recommendation or a common in this case.
So?
If the recommendation is with the vote of the majority of the planning commission, absolutely. If not, it becomes a common.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer, you have any questions?
The only item I had is, as a planning commissioner, we rely on a staff report as far as recommending approval or recommending denial. And not rely on it solely, but you guys have the most time to study a project, far more than the rest of us. And as an architect, I do have an advantage that I understand development and projects, so that helps me. But this is a big project, and the recommended action is really asking us to provide the direction for the planning department, which is, you know, so it's almost, I guess my global question is, it sounds like from your position, you feel that the general plan is going that direction anyway, and even if we're putting the cart before the horse, it's a cart that should be before the horse, because otherwise we're missing out on some opportunities. And I don't want to read into this, but I'm just trying to analyze this recommended action.
You know, I'd be more than happy to be upfront with why this particular recommendation from staff is different than everything you see. In all fairness to Vince, I am the one who put him in this predicament. This is his staff report, not my staff report, and Vince really started this project a while ago, when none of the proposed changes that we're discussing right now were even in consideration. So Vince, according to that, had been working on a staff report that was going towards the difference in the recommendation. However, in light of everything else that over the last four months I have put into the picture, it could have been a very difficult place, because in all honesty, and to be completely theoretically correct, we would have recommended denial, because this would be such a change of direction from the past practices and the past recommendations of planning staff to the planning commission. However, I really, really presented this challenge to him that, you're absolutely correct based on the analysis and the pathways that we have gone. At the same time, it could really fly in the face of common sense for us to recommend denial of a project in an area that we have every intention of changing the zone, so that instead, he couldn't very well go around and make a recommendation for approval, given that logically this wouldn't add up for him in light of what, everything else that he had worked on. At the same time, he couldn't very much go around and very well go around and recommend approval or denial. So in this case, we let the planning commission allow this dialogue to take place so that we can have a very public and open conversation. And I would tell you, if it was my staff report, I would have recommended something different, but it was his professional integrity and what he had to put at stake, and I wouldn't push him any beyond that. He had to have the ability to do that.
Yeah, I just was bringing it up because it was unique, and not necessarily bad or wrong, it's just more unique, because it is such a big project, and the, you know, just from my perspective, certainly architecturally, it's stunning, I mean, there's no question. It's just the land use is unique, and then the airport had its concern about the flight path, and certainly people can live wherever they choose, you know, but they, like next to, I wonder why people live next to freeways, but they do it all the time, so. So that would be certainly someone's choice on that. But that was my only, and the planning commission, even when we've had denial recommendations, have not necessarily gone with the denial. But I actually appreciate the way this is written in a sense, because you're right, to say denial would be, it sends a little bit of a what, you know? So we wouldn't want to just follow that blindly either, so. Is there any other comments or questions for Vince?
Yeah, I did, if I may, in sort of honing in on what you had indicated, Hassan. So in terms of the development agreement, I mean, I know we agreed on the in-lue, the city council agreed on what, the $9.35 figure based on pipeline?
Correct.
But that pipeline was based on a changed landscape, wasn't it?
The pipeline was strictly based on the date at which the application was submitted.
Well, and of course, what we're saying here today is that landscape's changed. So I mean, when this was originally applied for, it would not have been, in all likelihood...
No, it had to do with the date of the application submission. It had to do by the time that staff received an official application. So we really set that up, because there are different projects that were applied for prior to the revision of the housing opportunities ordinance, and they were in different parts of the process. And there was no way to start categorizing them, it was coming up at a sliding scale, so to speak. It was much easier to cut a, to take a cutoff line and say every project that was applied for prior to this date was applied for with a different set of economics in mind than today, if we raised the in-lue fee ordinance, and we did not want to really mess around with people's performance, and people had different negotiations at the time. But we wanted to level the playing field, so we said, we'll cut it off at the application date. And they fell very well within the category of pipeline projects.
Okay.
Any other staff questions? Okay? We have, I know we have some written communication on this project, we've received some emails, we've, there's written communication in the EIRs. Is there any additional written communication that we may have shown up in the last few minutes?
No additional information.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just add real quickly, one of the documents in front of you is Exhibit A.
Okay.
And if you recommend approval of the development agreement, we just ask that that be included in there, and that's just a list of offsite improvements that the public works agencies has requested as part of this project.
So I'd like to open the public hearing, and it's the same set of rules that I read earlier, about three-minute limit. If you need to speak longer than three minutes, you can ask to do so, we'll see how our timing is looking. I have a speaker card for Mr. Bisno, if you'd like to step up to the home plate here.
Thank you. Chairperson Gartner, members of the planning commission, members of staff, planning director, nice to meet you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak related to this project. I am a project opponent, primarily because I believe the applicant is seeking to hide the ball on what is, as I've outlined in my material, the disastrous economic effect that this project will have upon the city of Santa Ana. You will note that nowhere, nowhere in what the city has prepared, nowhere in what the developer has prepared and assiduously avoided, is an economic study, 10, 20, 30 years of what the city's revenues and costs will be under this project as compared to the current zoning. Why is that? The developer had every opportunity to put that information in front of you, you must draw your own conclusions while they're playing hide the ball. I can't guess to them, you can't guess to them, the developer had the opportunity, and we all know the axiom in law. If you had an opportunity to present stronger evidence and you presented weaker evidence, then the inference is you didn't have that stronger evidence. Now, where that relates to SEQA is quite easy. The developer's consultant is taking the position that we don't have to analyze the economics, because economics are not SEQA. Unfortunately, the developer's myopic view of that, or the developer's consultant's myopic view, is tone deaf. There are a series of cases called the Walmart cases. There's one in Bakersfield, there's one in Anderson, both in California, where under SEQA, opponents of a project challenged the EIR on the basis that although the impacts were economic, the argument was that Walmart would open out of town, and it would cause businesses to close downtown, and therefore there'd be less revenue downtown. The project opponents took the position that the economic impacts caused urban decay, reduction in school services, which again is blight, deterioration. Let me read what the court said, because there's enlightened self-interest argument here. "The fifth district rejected the EIR for both shopping centers because, among other deficiencies, they failed to adequately evaluate potential urban decay impacts. The Bakersfield EIR did not include even short statements indicating why decay impacts would be less than significant." We don't have any of that information here, and I would urge you to take one of two actions, either reject the application because that information has not been provided, or direct the applicant to provide the type of long-term study that you as decision-makers, that the city council is decision-makers, and that stakeholders must have in evaluating whether to approve or reject a project. "The incidence of urban decay when revenues fall for a city is no more starkly shown than Detroit and Stockton, two bankrupt cities." And to cast us back seven or eight years, Santa Ana was teetering, teetering on the verge of bankruptcy. And it is the fact that the council made some very good decisions, the planning commission aided in those decisions, that brought Santa Ana back from the peak. But this idea that a myopic EIR does not require an economic analysis, I believe is completely misplaced in face of the evidence which shows that an economic shortcoming leads to urban blight. Finally, with regard to mixed use.
I got to remind you, we have like three, and I hate to rush you, but?
Do I have to go?
Couple more minutes is fine.
With regard to mixed use, if the planning commission wants a mixed-use project, it should look at the project I did just across town, City Place. That is a mixed-use project. The planning commission should direct, as the general plan will be changed, should direct the applicant to consider a mixed-use project, not 98% residential and this much retail, because as I set out forth in the materials I provided you, zero, or effectively zero, will be the economic benefit to the city of Santa Ana, and a great deal of cost will be incurred. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have another speaker, Scott Rickstein. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
I know I got the Scott part right. Good evening, commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. The city of Tustin provided comments to the city of Santa Ana on this project on August 20th, and we have reviewed the responses to our comments. However, we still have some concerns. We believe some of our comments were not adequately addressed, so I'd just like to highlight those really quickly in the few minutes I have. Regarding parkland impacts, the city of Tustin still strongly feels that if parkland for active sports recreation is not required for this project, that residents may be unable to find conveniently located sports parks in Santa Ana, and may negatively impact facilities that are in our city or planned in our city in the Tustin Legacy Development. We believe that these impacts should be mitigated, and that the environmental impact report should have focused on the potential to physically deteriorate these facilities, as the nearest facilities of this type are located in the city of Tustin. Similarly, we felt that the environmental impact report should have analyzed the actual anticipated usage of the existing and proposed parks in the city of Tustin that offer sports-oriented recreational opportunities. Regarding traffic, the city made a few requests, some of which were honored. However, we still feel that the traffic study area should be expanded to include intersections along Warner Avenue and Edinger Avenue between Jamboree Road and Red Hill Avenue. We also feel that the intersections at the I-5 in Red Hill, as well as Red Hill and Nissan Road, and Red Hill and El Camino Real should have been analyzed. Another comment we had pertaining to traffic includes future improvements that are planned along Red Hill Avenue, including signal upgrades and new signals widening, et cetera, and we feel that this project should be obligated to pay its fair share towards the costs of these improvements on Red Hill. And finally, we had a comment regarding project trip distribution. Our traffic professionals noted that the distribution was not shown to the district at Tustin Legacy, where it was acknowledged that many of these people would shop. However, it failed to show traffic going inside the legacy in the area of the district, as well as in two of our neighborhoods, D and E. The traffic forecasting methodology appears to use an additive approach, and we feel a project of this... a project of this size should be modeled to capture any redistribution that occurs, especially given that it's a change from a non-residential use to a very large mixed-use project. So, that concludes my summary. I know you have seen a copy of our letter, but I just wanted to read it, write those this evening, and also for the public's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
A copy of the letter is in your final DIR, the small packet.
Yeah, I think we saw that. Are there any other members of the public that have not filled out a request to speak form that would like to speak? Up at the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman Gartner and members of the Commission. We are very pleased to be here tonight to present this outstanding project to you. I am going to focus mostly on the project benefits. I am Pamela Sopetto, representing Vineyard Tonight, and I think many of you know me as having worked in the city on many significant projects that have brought change, good changes to the city over the past twenty-five years. The supplemental information that I'm going to give you, you may not be aware of, so I'm going to mostly focus on that. Right now, what you have in this project area is basically a underutilized, an underutilized project, an underutilized building that has generated insignificant revenue to the city, and it has only been three percent occupied for the last twelve years. We propose to be the leader in economic revitalization to this area of the city of Santa Ana. Today, ninety percent of that warehouse on this property has been vacant. There is no sales tax revenue being generated. If you look at the red highlighted portion, you will, that is going to be what remains. That's going to be fifty-eight thousand square feet of office. That will be headquarters for TelePacific, and it will also be remodeled to, and expanded to allow the expansion of TelePacific in this area. We are proposing a ten million dollar remodel and expansion, which will create an addition of jobs from seven, which is there today, to a hundred and fifty. Shown in the green outline is the hotel, which, by the way, was approved by the city Planning Commission and Council as SD eighty-eight. We are proposing to expand SD eighty-eight with this project. The next slide, we talk about the cohesive zoning. I think respectfully, I'm disagreeing with Mr. Fregoso on what in fact is in the surrounding area. The enrolled friends. The surrounding area, as you can see, is being intensively planned for redevelopment as part of the Tuds, Tustin Legacy Development. If you look at, and I don't know that you can see as well here, but, and I'll show that to you in the next slide, the, that is being proposed as a significant amount of mixed use at the corner, towards the corner of Red Hill and Dyer. And in addition, you'll see the white, which is the city of Irvine IBC Residential Mixed-Use Overlay Zone, which most of you may know has, has been approved for over fifteen thousand new units. The Tustin Legacy, now with the proposed amendment, is probably looking more like sixty-six hundred new residential units in that area. On your next slide, we drill down a little bit better on what the adjacent uses are. What we have here is the Tustin, is the Tustin Legacy, and I'm going to tell you about the colors. The color overlay shows that the purple represents office, which is to the east of this project in Santa Ana, not necessarily industrial. The, if you look at the blue, that is actually retail. The pink is commercial, and also the adjacent hotel. And the proposed zoning, as you can see here, is clearly in keeping with the adjacent zoning of Tustin, Irvine, and is a continuation, again, of SD eighty-eight. I think in summary, land uses in Tustin Legacy and IBC will continue to influence growth and land use changes in the vicinity. The adjacent uses of residential, commercial, and mixed use are similar, consistent, and clearly compatible with the Heritage Village proposal. The, to address the TelePacific Office Campus Expansion, what you see on the left are what is there today, what you see on the right is what we are proposing to do. And again, we will be expanding that use to over fifty, to fifty-eight thousand square feet, and employee pool from seven to a hundred and fifty. It is important, I think, to note that, to ha, that we will be bringing housing in close proximity to this job center. The, in this case, on the same site. Heritage Village is what most planning experts and the state of California have deemed to be the prototype of the future, and I think this project will be that. Having retail, office, and housing in close proximity saves gas, saves the environment, and cuts down on the traffic. We will be bringing along with this pro, with this project a public art program. The public art program will contribute a fee under the development agreement of a one and a half million dollars. It will include a sculpture park, and large-scale sculptures, and several monumental sculptures. We are also proposing, and, and please note that the stars on the map are where we're proposing to put various sculptures in. However, these, whatever is, is implemented, will be approved by the Planning Commission prior to its implementation. In addition, I wanted to point out that we are going to be proposing, we think it's a good idea, on the left, if you, on the left, you'll see the existing entry sign at the corner of the hotel. And we are proposing to actually remove and upgrade that sign as part of this proposal, if the Planning Commission should, should see fit. The economic impact, we've, we've talked a bit, a lot about that. I want to talk about that a little bit. The, and, and definitely because of what we heard from the previous speaker, talk about the, the study that was done and the peer review that was done by the city. Those, both of those are well-known and highly respected firms. Both groups conclude significant city and community benefits were, will result from this project. The, they talked about the jobs standard, nineteen direct jobs, sixty-two indirect, eighty-four induced, and one thousand eight hundred and eighty-four construction jobs. We will be keeping a key employer on site with this project and creating new jobs. The studies concluded that the project will yield that number of jobs to cer, and I think it's important to point out what in the indirect jobs are. The indirect jobs actually are city jobs, which will be created to service the community. The revenue that's being created by this project can in fact fund forty new police officers, for example, or other key city employees. The impact to the general fund, it's important to note that significant increase to the general fund will result from this project fifty times greater than what you see today. Today, you will, would be, would be receiving, or the next twenty-five years, from the existing use, one and a half million in revenue. That's around forty-six thousand a year. If you approve this project, you would be looking at seventy-four point eight million over the next twenty-five years, which is approximately two point two million per year. The, that is also not talking about what the local school benefits are. The local school revenue would actually be significant. We're talking about an annual surplus to the, the school district of one point eight million. The, that is more than three and a half million of fees that will go, all told, to the city, um, excuse me, to the Santa Ana Unified School District. The school district has written a letter of support for the project, which I think you have in your packet. The affordable housing benefit of this project is important. According to the new HOO, this project will be paying six, nine dollars and thirty-five cents a square foot. That is, results in nine point six eight six million dollars to the Affordable Housing Fund. What we are showing you here are examples of an AmCal project that we would like to see this, these fees contributed towards. We are allowed under the HOO to write a letter requesting where these fees should be placed. We are requesting that they be placed with an existing project that AmCal is proposing on First Street. I think it's also important to note that we have, are recommending AmCal because they are a high-quality, affordable housing developer. We, I have personally toured their projects. You cannot tell the difference between these projects and a market rate project. They, these are actually current images now of other projects. Without projects like the Heritage, a meaningful Affordable Housing Fund for the city of Santa Ana could not be created. Open space. We heard about open space tonight, and what are we doing with open space, principally from our friends at Tustin. I think it's very important to note that we are proposing seven and a half acres of public open space with this project. We, this is over an eighteen-acre project site. One of the exceptional features of this open space, this public open space, is that we are developing it to be used for both residents and for the public. It's more than a mile-long fitness trail and bike path with mini-run-walk loops in it. And we're also proposing that the fitness trails be outfitted with exercise stations at regular interval, intervals. And we are proposing to connect these to the regional trail systems. Housing ratios. Why is housing important? I think that, let's see, we're at community improvements, just a minute. With regard to community improvements, it's important that you also realize that the amount of contribution to both, the, to infrastructure with this project is significant. We will be building over a thousand feet of fourteen-inch sewer line, and we'll be upsizing the existing and replacing. The cost for this improvement is over fourteen, is, is over a million dollars. The developer will also contribute over a million dollars to widen adjacent intersections and roadways, install new traffic lights, add turning lanes at numerous intersections. Additionally, I want to add that this project is going to be lead silver, and I don't think you've had a lead silver project yet in this community. So, we're very pleased about that. The housing ratios, one of the most significant things that has resulted from the analysis that we've done in preparation for this project, is to look at what the city housing ratio is in comparison to surrounding communities. Here in Santa Ana, we have four and a half persons per household. And compared to surrounding Orange County cities, that, those cities fall between two persons per household to three persons per household. I think it's important that you see this red line because it is the direct result of the lack of approval of, of housing opportunities in the city over the last twenty years. Please to, this unbalanced ratio of population to housing units is detrimental to the city. There have been several articles published in the last couple of years that stress Santa Ana's housing crisis. The best way to solve the housing crisis is to increase the supply of housing. The results are more affordable housing costs and better quality of life for the residents of the city of Santa Ana. These are some of the, some of the articles that we are quoting. LA Times has said, "The Orange County's shortage of housing will drive out workers and drag down the region's robust economy." The Register has said, "Experts estimate that Orange County already has a deficit of thirty thousand to sixty thousand homes." It is, Santa Ana is one of the most crowded in the nation, if you, if we look statistically at what we've got. "We believe the new wave of decision-makers at the city recognize and understand this crisis. We believe this proposed project will help implement the strategic plan adopted by the city, which addresses changes that need to be accomplished. It is clear that tens of thousands of homes are needed to help solve the housing crisis." Community support. The, it's, I think that you'll find that the community's support here has been significant. The largest employer of the submarket, RICO, has indicated that it is irrefutable that the area will be enhanced with a mixed huge, mixed-use project. Calderwood, our neighbor, has said it would be beneficial to both the hotel and its guests. And Heinz, who is our next-door neighbor, has said that the area is, one, in need of revitalization, and has become disconnected from key services, including housing and retail. They also believe this project will increase property values, attract new companies to the area, and will be beneficial as a whole to the city of Santa Ana. Our project is clearly, clearly supported by our neighbors. This slide is a sample of the letters of that support from the adjacent property owners and businesses. The community, its businesses, and landowners all support the project. We do not know of a single stakeholder in this submarket that does not support the development of Heritage Village. We hope that the Commission recognizes how unusual this is, and that it truly represents a need for this type of project. The, again, we are showing more letters of support. The second-largest commercial property owner in Orange County has noted that the area is in need of additional mixed-use amenities. William Hesmehalch, who is a leading architect in the community, in the Orange County and in Southern California, is stated, "This is both beneficial and appropriate for the location." They are also neighbors. And as I have previously noted, this Santa Ana Unified School District supports this. "After more than two years of processing the project, no adjacent property owner, homeowners or tenants have objected to the project. We have only received support because Heritage Village will help revitalize the area, provide housing for the workforce, provide new jobs, create a better traffic pattern, inject needed revenue to the city and school district, and improve property values." I think that, that in summary is clearly, I, indicates the benefit that this project brings to the area. We are now in a market condition that can allow this project to be built successfully, and we agree with our community development director that, or planning and zoning director, I should say, planning and building, that this is the time to do this and not to wait for another two years. Thank you. And we're here for any questions. Our entire team is here.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Mill.
I'm sorry. I forgot. I got so enamored with Mr. Bizno that I forgot to ask him if he could, if it's okay with the chair, explain to me what he meant by enlightened self-interest. You're so, so eloquent, Mr. Bizno, that you just had me starstruck there, so if you could just explain that, and I kid.
Commissioner, I don't get that out of my family, but I thank you for that. We just heard the developer's representative tell us about the benefits that this new development will bring. Did you hear one word? Did you hear one syllable about the cost to the city? We heard about income, but we're all in business. Income and expense is what mattered. And I suggest to you that if you heard one word about cost, you heard one more than I do, and it's because that's the ten-thousand-pound elephant in the ring.
But if we could focus on...
As to enlightened self-interest, in the event that this DIR is passed the way it is without this necessary study, I believe there's a substantial likelihood it will be challenged, and the challenge will be successful. On the other hand, if you really like this project, if you want to support it, and you want to see it go now, rather than... want to see it go now rather than never, I would urge you to advise the applicant, perform a study, income and expense. Use income or someone because that will take two or three months. It'll settle the issue, and that is the enlightened self-interest, and that is you avoid a court challenge by doing that which the law requires you to do anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other speakers that wish to speak? Applicants done?
Good evening, Chairman Gartner, the commission. I think there's a deficit of information. We did conduct a study, RSG, the same group the city uses. In the Concord group, the applicant paid over fifty thousand dollars to conduct the study. The study's chief analysis was to understand the gross revenue to the city and cost of services to the city. The analysis concluded nearly three point one million dollars gross revenues after cost of services. These are things such as if you had to hire a new city attorney, if you had to hire a couple additional officers, came the two point two. Staff was impressed with the findings. They did their own study, which we had to pay for, another forty thousand dollars. They hired a group called the Hoffman Group. The Hoffman Group concluded the same, almost to the penny, gross revenue to the city. They had more cost of services to the city, which resulted in about a million dollars net revenue. So study number one was roughly two. Study number one was roughly one million net benefit to the city's general fund. And as five of you know, general funds are funds that can be used for anything. I believe the reports were our public and should have been part of the staff report. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Does anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, that being the case, the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to bring back the, the project for discussion and/or motion discussion. Commissioner Basera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you, Ms. Sepetta, for your presentation because when I met with Mr. Ogulnick, I knew I was not going to be able to convey all those stats to my colleagues to have that, so I'm glad you made that presentation. So you saved me a big burden because I was impressed with Mr. Ogulnick's presentation. He rattled those things off fantastically. So again, thank you. You've saved me that burden. So I don't envy the gentleman from Tustin who's come to tell us about how horrible it's going to be, the impact that this project could potentially have on their parks because as I'm reading on page two dash fifteen of the final EIR, it does say that Tustin Legacy would require approximately fifty-six point seven acres of parkland and that the Tustin Legacy would provide approximately two hundred and fifty-five acres. Just kind of wondering how that would, how this project or any folks from Santa Ana coming over there to use the public parks would be a detrimental thing. So slightly offended, just saying. As far as shopping, it looks like that this site potentially could out for some really good amenities for shopping. Maybe we wouldn't even cross over to Red Hill. Maybe we wouldn't go over there. I'm sure a few folks would straggle, but for the most part, I think there's some opportunities in our city that I think they would take advantage of as well. That's all I have to say right now.
Any other additional discussion? Commissioner Mill?
No.
Alder Ready.
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll take a stab at it. You know, I have, you know, grave concerns over losing industrial for residential precisely because industrial never returns. It's something that Vince had mentioned. I know the city of Los Angeles struggled with this, and I think a, the head of the CRA lost her job over this because she was very opposed to eliminating the industrial on the east side between downtown LA and the river. Here, though, I think we have a little bit of a different situation. We've got twelve years of unused and underutilized land, and that's, that's a big problem, as I see it. I think that LA didn't have that problem. We have that problem. I think the other thing that, that it's important to note is that the open space in this project is abundant. As you might have all noticed, I did have a concern with the, with the affordable housing in Luffy, but that isn't a failure of the applicant. That's a failure of leadership of the city to have that at a higher amount. So I can't and do not hold that against the applicant. The other thing I think, as I look at this project, I think it's a, it's a gorgeous project. And I know that it's, I struggle with this decision, but I think it is an actually a project that has a net benefit, Mr. Ogulnick said to the city. And if this project is subject to challenge, which I'm sure every project is, I know that to be the case, then whoever wants to put their money where their mouth is can do that and file a writ at any time once this project is approved by the city council. So those are sort of my initial thoughts on this project.
Commissioner Bauer, any additional discussion?
Well, yeah, I have to share, as I vocalized earlier, my concern, as Commissioner Alder Ready has pointed out, as some of the others have, that, you know, as Vince has, that the city's giving up a base. And, you know, we lose that base, that's not a good thing. And what I'm concerned here is that we didn't do an analysis comparing apples to apples. Or here, we, all we did was we compared this as an empty lot with what it could be. And I don't know that that's the proper analysis. My concern was why wouldn't we do some sort of analysis in terms of it in an industrial setting versus what it would be? And I'd imagine we do that when there's a general plan. And I don't want the tail wagging the dog. And that's what this project appears to me in some sort. We're allowing this developer and this beautiful project. I mean, I like the project. I think it's gorgeous. But be that it is may, the project's sort of dictating what direction we're going to take. Red Hill. And I don't like that. I mean, that's not the direction, that's, I don't think that is what we're supposed to be doing as a commission. That concerns me. And if we're supposed to be doing that in terms of a general plan, weighing the, losing this industrial base, and maybe there's a higher and better use, and I, and that may well be the case here. I think it probably is. I'm not sure why that wasn't done then in connection with this project. I mean, if we're going to do with the general plan, we're saying we're heading in that direction, why didn't we do that with this project? Or why wasn't required of this applicant? Or why didn't the city do it? You know, anyone do it? So, but, I mean, with a lot of this stuff, unfortunately, I think, you know, once it comes to the commission, you know, we sort of see the stuff sort of set in stone. And I don't like the posture that this thing was presented itself in. I think it's unfortunate. I wish we'd had some more analysis before us. But I do like the project itself. I haven't said that.
Commissioner Basera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I appreciate my colleagues' concern about the industrial base, and we do want to retain as many jobs in this city as we can, I think the market spoke for us. The thing's been laying there derelict for years, with the exception of a minor percentage of it being used for office space. So I think it's not so much that people were clamoring to make it industrial and the applicant came in and swooped it out from everybody. It's been sitting there. Not one year, not two years. We're talking over a decade. So that, to me, is a strong statement. While, again, I have that concern about losing our base, I think in this particular instance we have that. And as far as the project dictating the direction we go, I mean, to Tustin's credit, they've moved ahead in a certain direction. And I think for us, we don't want to be caught behind. I mean, I don't think it would be great to have us, you know, later on try to develop something or hope somebody comes in to develop it and, you know, we're back in the wrong end of a cycle again. So I appreciate staff's ambition to try to, you know, keep up with the economics that's taking place today and not get caught behind. So those are just my thoughts at the moment.
Commissioner Mill?
Don't want to sound like a broken record here, but I do think when you lose your industrial property, you're, you're putting yourself in a bad, bad position. I mean, I look at other cities here in the, in Orange County, places like Stanton, places like, they lost, they're, they're losing their industrial property. However, I got to agree with you. This thing's sat vacant for twelve years, and so it's not exactly, there was a large rush to, to have folks come in and utilize the property for an industrial use. My concerns also are about the traffic in the area. Traffic is abysmal there now. It's one of the worst, because I work, I work that area a lot, and so I, I'm surprised that when the folks from Tustin came down, that wasn't one of the major issues that they struck on. I wouldn't be complaining about people from Santa Ana using some of your, your parks. I'm going to complain that people from Santa Ana are going to go spend their money in Tustin. You guys are going to make up a lot of money in tax revenue from, from them going and shopping in your city. Same with, same with Irvine. You know, is this project perfect? Well, nothing we're going to ever see. No one's ever going to agree a hundred percent. Does it have, have some issues? Eh, of course. All projects do. I think, I think it's a beautiful-looking project. I like that they're utilizing the, the commercial building that is there to bring in the TelePacific folks. It's basically an underutilized commercial property now. And from what I understand, that TelePacific is going to be bringing back employees to work at that site, which is, which is bringing more jobs hopefully into, into our community. You know, again, I, and I also kind of agree with, with Commissioner Bauer, though. It is kind of the, the tail wagging the dog. However, you know, if we wait two years, I mean, we can tell these folks, yeah, sorry, you know, guys, let's wait two years until we get our stuff together. I don't think, I don't think that's right either. So, you know, I appreciate Mr. Bizno's, Bizno's passion about this, but I agree with, with Commissioner Alder Ready. He's saying, you know, if someone's going to sue over this, well, then I guess that's what'll happen. But again, I think losing industrial property is never a good thing because we, we're not going to get it back. But in this case, this is industrial property that hasn't been used. So having industrial property that's not used, do we really lose anything in the first place? So with that, if, if there's any other discussion, if not, go ahead and formulate a motion or if you-
I'll call on you for motion just a second if you want. I was going to add to your, like Commissioner Bauer said, and we talked about this, it's a cart before the horse a bit, but on the other hand, the waiting, the two years, it could be four years. Opportunity comes and goes. I think South Coast Plaza was one of those opportunities. It left Santa Ana years and years ago before my day, or just about my day. I think Tustin's done a tremendous job at the district. I've shopped there constantly. And if I thought I could live next door, I probably would, whether it's Santa Ana or Tustin. So that whole area, really just, we have a physical line in the sand, but really it's, it really does need to kind of drift across the line. And I think with the additional residential, it forces other commercial activity to take place. Now, whether the cost of services that Mr. Bizno talked about and doing the math, and you're more the expert than I am with that, but the, the reality is a stunning project as well. And, and I do like how they implemented the existing chunk of, of commercials sort of surrounding it with the residential, so it's very clever. And it'll just add to the Tustin project. So I just think it'd be one, kind of a nice neighborhood there. So Commissioner Mill, you wish to speak?
You know, I have to weigh a whole lot of things before I, before we, we decide which way we're going to come. But I think, when I see the school district behind this project, I see other groups in the community have, have gotten behind this project. You know, like I said, it's not a, it's not a perfect project. In a perfect world, I'd want to see that, that site being utilized for industrial uses to bring more jobs into our city. I think in the interim, this, you'll have short-term jobs as far as construction. You're going to bring in really quality jobs to, union jobs into the city to, to, to build the project, which is a good thing. We certainly could use those. So I will recommend, now, if you guys can help me, word, we're, we're recommending that we, are we recommended to the city council that they-
Yes.
Recommend approval of the final environmental impact report, 2015 dash oh one, the amendment application number 2014 dash four, the development agreement twenty dash fifteen, or 2015 dash three, with the amendment that the money for the in lieu of housing, the housing opportunity ordinance funds be used are directed towards the AmCal project on First Street. Approve the, the vesting tentative tract map number 2015 dash oh three for the mixed, for the Heritage mixed-use development project proposed at 2001, East Dyer Strategic Plan number three and number two.
For a second.
Second.
Pardon me? Excuse me.
It's recommending certification of the final EIR.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Alder Ready?
Just seconded it. Okay. Did you have a comment, Commissioner?
Sorry, I didn't get that.
She didn't get that.
Didn't even get a chance to start. Wow.
Chairman, Chairman Gartner may also just mention that you also include an exhibit, A, is on a development agreement, this onsite improvements, that, that came out earlier from Public Works.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need that added in, Vince? So is it added in?
It's added.
It'll be added. Okay. Commissioner Alder Ready, you seconded that? We're good. Commissioner Basera?
Just a real couple of quick comments. One, love the creativity. And I think Commissioner Mill talked about that, how we've, or how the applicant has taken the site, utilized the office space. I like that. Love the generous onsite open space. And I just, the reason I'm bringing that up is I hope that as we see these types of projects, especially if there are more to come in this area, that we definitely build upon this or expand. Would hate to have other cities complain that we're utilizing their spaces. The other is, I like the eyes on the streets. I like the street frontage, and I hope that we further that as well. I hope that there's more of that opportunity, again, to draw more folks from Tustin into our city to use our commercial spaces. And then I appreciate what the applicant offered as far as the city monuments. And I would like to just add for staff, if we have more of these projects that are near our boundaries, if there are ways to incorporate some sort of civic-minded improvements, especially, you know, we've got the public art as part of this component, and as this commission knows, we've had an issue as far as when it comes to how public art addresses our civic-mindedness. My only concern about the motion that's before us is, you know, as was brought up here on the dais, that, or not on the dais, excuse me, from staff, is that for us to stay within our purview, the housing opportunity ordinance, when it was brought to us for amendments, it was based on the land use. As far as any sort of allocation of housing, as far as for what the, in Lufy's would go to or anything like that, that's not within our purview. You know, we can make all kinds of recommendations to the city council, but I think we should be making recommendations that stay in line with what we're charged to do as a planning commission. Sometimes it seems like we do overreach. We've all made recommendations that do that, and I appreciate staff for kind of steering us back in. I think we're kind of treading back into that. I support the project. I'm willing to support the motion, but I just don't really think that we need to keep going outside our purview with that.
The ordinance and the development agreement state that the owner can propose the preference of where they want the money to be applied, that it's in the sole discretion of the executive director. So you don't need to add that to your motion here today?
However, I mean, just, a point of clarification, it's, we're only making a recommendation, right? I mean, that's, so we're just letting the council know that? Is, is that problematic?
I just don't-
We're not-
I, I just, I specifically asked the question earlier, would it be okay, executive director? I don't want to go outside my purview now. I don't want to get yelled at. However, I asked the question, and I was specifically told that yes, we could recommend.
If I may, Mr. Chair, yes, it is absolutely within your right to make a recommendation and vote on it in full power. And I must add that no part of this hearing has included anything on the project that you are recommending to direct us to. We know nothing as far as this particular hearing goes about the merits or lack thereof, the project for which you're recommending to make funding for. And that is outside. The reason that I'm stressing that, and the reason that we asked the city council to leave that with the housing authority and the executive director of community development, is that in their, from their standpoint, they can compare merits of the projects that are before them and make a decision on funding them or not. This is only a comment. I am not trying to persuade you, persuade you to go one way or another. Simply stating the facts. Thank you.
And I, and I was simply making a recommendation. I wasn't telling anybody what they could or could not do. I'm just making a recommendation.
And I think that the, the project that you're talking about, as Hassan said, we don't know enough about it. But I, I don't disagree that AmCal has done many projects throughout Southern California, maybe even further. So I, I have nothing against the company, what, you know, again, I don't know what they're exactly proposing at this point. But I think it just goes back to, you know, we, looking at what we have here before us, there's nothing for us to opine on, as the city attorney has said. It's really not something that we should be going into. But again, I support the project, and if that's the motion and the second before us, I'd be willing to forego that to support the project.
And I would agree with foregoing it. Should we, do we, we have a motion?
If you guys want to, if you want to make a substitute, I'm not going to remove that from my motion.
I'll, I'll offer suggest, an alternative motion, that we just approve it without that recommendation on that particular project.
Second.
Should I go through the whole?
Well, we have an alter, we have an alternate motion and a alternate second. So we're to vote on that or to the first motion?
Didn't we ever have a second?
We already had a first and a...
We had a first and a second.
Eric seconded.
On the original motion.
So first we have to vote on the first motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second.
Or, or is it withdrawn?
Or, or you're withdrawing your motion?
I'm not going to withdraw the motion.
Okay. So a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Well...
Except for the absence of Commissioner Reno and Commissioner Nall.
Yeah, they just voted on the first one, so that is decided.
Well, I, I didn't vote, actually. I was going to oppose it, that particular one, and I would have supported the alternative.
So city attorney, help us out here.
So the motion that was seconded was to include the preference for AmCal. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so then the vote came for one of them.
So the, the motion with the approval of the AmCal project was approved by the four commissioners. Okay.
And the substitute motion, we didn't vote on because we already voted on.
Didn't.
That was confusing. Thanks, guys, for making confusion. Great. Let's move on to absences. We have Commissioner Nall.
Make a motion that we excuse Sandy and Lynette.
Although, there's a motion, there's a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously for the excused absences, Commissioner Nall and Commissioner Reno, and of course, they're absent. Staff member comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, once again, I'd like to remind you that the next meeting will be chaired by the city attorney, and we'll go over the work program and a number of issues that the city attorney and I, I would like to discuss with the commission, especially with a very heavy work program that is coming up. We will also give you a presentation of the general plan update scheduled in the next meeting. We have, we were planning to keep the agenda clear of projects. However, there was one project which is, which is requesting state tax financing funding that's, that needs to go by. So they were bringing that one project. That'll be the only thing that we give before you as a project. Everything else will be basic, the commission and staff business. And the second thing, I wanted to, to let you know that we've spoken with staff. We are going to remove a lot of the redundancies in the staff report, and we're going to try to summarize a lot of the things in tables and bullet points to reduce the text, to make it a lot easier for the commission to get through the staff reports faster. And then we will put all the details and the additional materials as attachments, so that we will not be missing of any information. The staff report will be lighter and easier to get through. The third, and by no means the least important, which is that I wanted to publicly, on behalf of myself and the city staff, thank Vince Fergoso. Vince Fergoso has gallantly, gallantly really driven this agency over the last two years, first as the acting planning manager, then as acting planning manager, and the acting director, and then back as the acting planning manager again. And he has been tremendously valuable to me. Before I even started my position, he called me, he met with me, he took me around every step of the way over the last four months. He has been having my back, making sure that I'm not slipping, I'm not going the wrong direction. If I was, he would warn me, and even if I was doing it again, he would warn me again. I must tell you that after having been, after coming here with a city where the department did not have a director, I expected the staff and the planning division and the rest of the agency not to be in good shape. I must say, I found quite the opposite. Staff was in great spirit. Everybody was energetic and going to, doing a good job. And, and a lot more could have, a lot could have gone wrong that didn't go wrong. And in fact, a lot went right when Vince was in charge. And the way he handled the, the agency to me, it was in excellent shape. I wanted to take the time to acknowledge Vince Fergoso in front of the staff and the commission and the public and thank him. Thank you very much, Vince Fergoso. And the honor refreshments for the commission and staff and the members of the public would like to go to the green room later on to just celebrate. And thanks, thanks Vince and the public. That's, that's all we have to say.
Just to clarify, I'm not leaving. We just got a new planning manager coming on board. He's not getting rid of me.
No, I know that. Okay, what do we need to know here? Great. Any other staff comments, Vince?
No, I think Hassan said it all. It's been great working with you guys. I'll still be around. Still be up here. So just come over there, sit next to Vernie.
That's a challenge in itself.
So thanks, thanks for everything. Appreciate it.
Lisa, you have any other comments? No? Okay. Planning commissioners?
No.
Karen?
Comment over here.
Yes, there was an interest to start the next meeting at five o'clock.
Oh, that's right. There, there's, there's talk of, rumor has it, that the next meeting, we may want to start at five o'clock because we have a, I guess, an item popped up that we need to do. Is everybody good with starting at five? Can you guys get here? Instead of 5:30?
Is there a reason why we're doing that?
Yes.
I think the training's going to take over an hour, and then there's one item that has to go, and that means you're hoping to not have to do that. And then there's the general plan update.
Yeah, the general plan update, we expect you will have a lot of questions. That is really front and center, which is in your purview, and we think you may have a lot of input before we actually start the program. We would like you to have the time to, to manage. So it's up to you.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty flexible, but I don't know everyone else's schedule. So I'm, I'm okay with it.
And if you don't, we'll just stay on very easy. That's...
Eric, can you make it?
I'm just working. I want you...
I'm okay with it.
Phil?
For you, I'll do.
For me?
Well...
Jim and I are here at five anyway.
Yeah, I'm here at five anyways. It's always, it works fine with me. But I'll be, we'll be, we'll be a little earlier. It's okay. All right, yeah, let's do it. Hey, would you mind just shooting out an email reminder? That, that'd be good, because I just know that it'll drift.
Then with your permission, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, we'll do the hearing item at five, so that the applicant and the interested parties know to come at that point, and they'll be gone.
Right.
Done, then we can go with the business.
And the agenda will just show that, right? I mean, we kind of flip it.
Mr. Chair, I just, I hope as a, I hope as a policy that we don't try to keep pushing things ahead, just because I think for the interest of the community, as we have more projects coming before us, I mean, obviously, this seems to be a special exception, but hopefully, we won't do that as a policy.
Yeah, I think it was a one-time thing. I think that there was summary, because it was going to get, just get too late, I guess.
Yes, it's just a one-time only. We're going to keep it 5:30.
Yeah, 5:30 is pretty handy.
Yeah.
Everyone has it mentally figured out that, and if, and sometimes people are traveling or, it's a flexible job.
We will send the commission a reminder...
Perfect.
By email or a call to remind you that you'll start at five.
All right, that's easy. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Basara, we'll start with you. On agenda, not on non-agenda items. Non-agenda items. No rehashing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No intent to rehash. If anything, since we're giving everybody kudos tonight, I want to give kudos to our executive director. Did a fantastic job at the GRO conference. I thought you, and as they dubbed you guys, the dream team, you are city manager and Ms. Renders from community development. You guys did an excellent presentation. I think you guys really did a fantastic job of selling the city and showing folks that, you know, this is a place where business can be done and where the best interests of the community are being served simultaneously. I think sometimes in our past, that wasn't always the impression that folks had. I think you guys did an excellent job in showcasing that, and the conference was well-attended. And not to call off my colleague, Commissioner Bauer, but he was there as well. And, you know, again, it was just, you guys did a great job, so I just wanted to give you a...
Thank you. Commissioner Alderetti?
I just wanted to say thank you to Vince. He's been a great help to me the last few months. And he's a soldier here at the city, and he's been around a lot. And so the kudos that Hassan offered are well-deserved. The other thing is more of a joke, but I'm hoping that Sean and Phil will just do something about the USC football program because we need, we need a better representation than Pat Hayden and Coach...
That's a good non-agenda.
Yeah, no, I just found that out.
Pat Hayden is an attorney. I'm surprised you guys...
Uh, he was a states and trusts attorney, not a real attorney. Anyway, that's it for my comments.
Mr. Mill?
They shouldn't have ever hired a guy who went to work for Notre Dame.
Okay.
So we'll start there. And Cal lost on Saturday, so I don't know what you're so cocky about. You know, yesterday, you know, a lot of people, I've lived in Santa Ana for my entire life, and a lot of people don't, a lot of people are new, new to the city. And yesterday was actually probably, it was one of the darkest days in our city's history. It was the 30th anniversary of the assassination of Alex Ode. And it, it just, 30 years, I remember the day well. I was leaving Santa Ana College that morning, and he was assassinated when with a bomb detonated at his office at near 17th and, and Cabrillo. And so it just, and 30 years later, the, the cowards that were behind the attackers still, still, well, maybe some of them have gone to their demise. But they're still, they've never been brought to justice. And I just wanted everyone, you know, if you're not, not, not well-versed in, in the history of our city, you know, the, the longest unsolved domestic terrorist attack in the history of the United States happened right here, and it was 30 years ago yesterday. And it was just, when I, when I realized that, it was just a very, very sad remembrance because Alex Ode was a, was a good, good man. His statue sits in front of the, in front of the library in Santa Ana. And I just wish that, you know, more people would, would learn more a little bit about the history of that. You know, the statue was, was erected with the help of Casey Kasem. He helped raise the money. And so, you know, I just, just one of those things, you know, our city has had a lot of great things happen. But I was just, you know, I picked up yesterday's register, and when I saw that, it was a very, very dark day in our city's history. And it just saddens me that, because so many people commented to me, oh, I didn't know that happened, that more folks aren't, aren't aware of that history. So with that, thank you, Vince. Your, Vince is, Vince is great. Vince has been, been, been here a long time too, so he, he knows about a lot of history as well. But you've been a tremendous, tremendous asset to this, to this commission by far. I was a little worried when Hassan started talking that when they bring, when they start bringing out refreshments, that means they're usually ushering you out the door. And so I, yeah. But, but no, you, everything he said and much more, you've been a tremendous asset to, to myself and, and I know to, to most of my colleagues up here. And, and I do commiserate with you that you have to sit next to Vernie in the audience instead of the, the city attorney. So, so thank you, Vince.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yeah, no, I really appreciate it. I know it sounds like you're leaving, but we really appreciate it. Working with you, I mean, you're just, you provided continuity, you know, where it was needed the most in between all those. I mean, I was a relative newcomer to the commission, so I really appreciated that. I know you've answered the questions I was posing. It seems like Vince always gets those questions, and I think it's probably a lot of us do that, because we feel like we can get answers readily from you. And I, I think that says a lot about who you are and, and what you're about. So I've really appreciated you and, and what you've done for the planning department. I know that's very important with all the changes that have occurred. But I, I was also at the GRO conference, I want to point that out. That was terrific. I thought it was an amazing message. I was, you know, you just couldn't be prouder to be a resident of Santa Ana. I mean, it was really, everyone spoke with one voice, "The future of the county lies in Santa Ana." And I was really proud. You guys did a terrific job at the conference.
Thank you. I don't have to repeat what everyone said, because I don't want to make it sound like Vince is leaving, but I must say that...
Leaving for the night.
Leaving for the night.
He wants to go now.
Twenty-eight years.
Have some refreshments, of course.
I, I've been, and I moved to Santa Ana almost 29 years ago, and I've been an architect here for most of them, almost 28 and a half, 28 and three quarters. I've known Vince from day one. So, and he's, he's helping me every day with projects, and Vernie and Ricardo and Take. I can email them preliminaries, and they gladly look at them. And it's been really helpful, because by the time I hit a site plan review, or it's already figured out. It's not like something blindsiding anybody with projects. And that's the proactiveness of Santa Ana. And I've, I felt that way with the little office building I bought. I felt that way with my neighborhood. When I first moved here, it was like, wow, it was a big change from Montana, one extreme to the other, I'll tell you. But it has come every day. It has gotten better. It's never gone downhill. It's only gone uphill. And seeing some of these projects that we're seeing and surrounding, not just the downtown, we focused a lot on the downtown. Now we're seeing the perimeter projects, and I think that's really exciting. And Harbor Boulevard, and seeing people buy up stuff that was disastrous. And Broadway's all redone, thanks to Public Works and, and, you know, that's, a lot of streets are done, the bike lanes with the green, little green paint job. I think those are great, you know. So I think you moved in at a good time, you know. And I think, we're glad to see you here, and you're proactive, and, and we love it. So we've got a good crew. So thank you very much. With that, we're adjourned. Drinks?
Let's go get some punch. Let's get some cocktails. What do you mean, just talk?
Yeah, I wanted to bring cocktails. I'm trying to get the city manager to allow us to start serving cocktails at the property.
We can go to the old show.
I did that, I explained that. Finally, I got started, too. I was up to it. I said, we gotta allow, okay. He said, I'm all for it, man. He changed something that, nothing done.
Oh, thanks.
We're having us cocktails with some...
Where are the drinks?